Okay, calling the August 18, 2019, school committee meeting to order, 6:05 PM. The meeting will be recorded and may be televised live. Ms. Haynes, could you please do the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Fabiano.
Yeah.
Mr. Matucci.
Yeah.
Ms. Powell.
Present.
Ms. Swope. Mr. Vacchia. Mr. Perrin. Mr. Kepaevian.
Present. All right, I'd like to do the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Matucci, can you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to general information and recommendations. Any delegates or visitors? None. Can I get a motion for the approval of the minutes for July 15, 2019, and July 29, 2019?
Motion.
Can I get two separate motions? One for the July? That would be?
I'll give one for July.
Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
And then on the July 29, can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, warrant number SVW20-3 in the amount of $117,853.28. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a vote to accept donation of school supplies. Motion or accept?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
If I can just add one thing about the school supply donations. So, we had a family reach out to us, the Shea family, and they asked if we would accept donations of school supplies for the school, for families in need and for students who may come to school and just have forgotten to get some supplies, as well as having extra supplies on hand at school. It was the idea of two of our students, JoJo and Gabby Shea, and they put together a donation collection drive and received, I'll provide you with a copy of what they received, but hundreds of donations. And when I say hundreds, you know, things such as pencils, binders, two-pocket folders. They were smart enough to go online and look at what K-12 needed for supplies. So, they put out a list for people, and people were able to come by and stop in front of the coming school. The students put boxes out to separate them and then compiled this great list for the principals to have. So, they put it into a Google Doc, which allows the principals to go in, and so, for instance, they've listed for pens. They have blue 10-packs of pens, and there are quantity collected, nine quantity available, nine. They put together a Google Doc, so the principal can go in and grab five of those, and it will calculate how many are left. And so, that was just a great idea. But more importantly, JoJo and Gabby having the vision to do that and working to help and support their fellow students and other students who may be in need. So, I thank them for that, and I thank them for thinking of other people. That's what we ask of our kids to do all the time. So, this is a great example of that, and I'm thankful that we're able to accept those. And once they're, now that we've accepted them, I'll put the Google Doc live to the principals, so that they're able to say what they need, and then I'll work with Krista in terms of grabbing the supplies and dropping them off at the individual schools.
Can we get the students to come in that were involved, the parents, so we can put a commendation together from the school committee?
Excellent, great idea, sure. We can do that for the next school committee meeting. Thank you.
Buildings and grounds. Anyone have a motion for the three Joni Starr dancers? The ATC PTO for meeting dates, school events. And they, well, the Fort Banks School for the PTO. Can I get a motion for those three?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's all three of them together?
We have a subcommittee report possibly from the superintendent evaluation subcommittee. I know we had a meeting today.
It's 5:30, we had a meeting in this room. Mr. Fabiano and I attended with Lisa, however, the superintendent. And we have three documents that, actually four, that this will pass out to the entire committee. One being the narrative of the goals, one being the actual goals and progress, an action plan, and accomplishments. And lastly, will be the actual evaluation form of the superintendent. The committee would need to take these, look over all the information, fill out the eval report. I'd like to get them back into me by, did you say the ten?
By, by that's mean, was it the ten, is that Patty?
No, I think it's, is it the ten?
I can't remember. I know it's, I know it's early, it's the ten.
Is it the ninth?
It's the ninth.
The ninth, okay. So, the meeting on the ninth, and then I'll be able to compile everything and make a final report. We'll have a subcommittee meeting before the second meeting in September to make sure that there aren't any issues or questions. If there are any individual questions for the superintendent, she's more than willing to meet with any individual school committee member or collectively whatever. But we could do that, and then at that last meeting, I would have an evaluation report compiled by the, all of the evaluation reports of each committee member. So, just an update.
Any questions? Okay, moving on to superintendent's report.
Yes, couple of updates. So, the MBTA pass program that we offered last year for students, once we had determined that we were not going to have a fee for service, bus transportation for students across town, and we limited it to students who lived beyond two miles in grades kindergarten through sixth. We obviously noticed that there were a number of kids who still needed to travel a good distance, and we're still taking the MBTA. So, we put together, in working with the MBTA, the use of Charlie cards that we have available at the school for our students, so it's at a discounted rate. We received copies of the Charlie cards, which we've ordered. As of August 16, they were available. They send us 400 cards. We enroll any student who wants to take the bus during the school year. It's a Monday-through-Friday pass, and it allows the students to ride at a discounted rate of 85 cents. They actually load the money on the card themselves at a Charlie card machine, but instead of paying, I believe it's $1.85 per ride, they pay 85 cents, maybe even a little higher. It's also important to note that if a parent is traveling with their child, any child under 11, 11 years old or under, rides free with a parent, and a parent can have two children per parent ride free. So, some parents want to ride the bus with their students, they would pay their own fee, which is not discounted, but the two children, if they're 11 or under, would be able to go on the bus for free. We have updated that letter to inform the parents of the transportation service, of how to get a Charlie card, how to access that if you're a middle school student or a high school student, and that will be on the website of each school page, as well as our main page, and will be put on Facebook tomorrow. I believe the high school put theirs up already today. We had a lot of, students take advantage of that last year, a lot.
On that discount, is that only for the bus, or does that also include the T?
So, it's school bus transportation. So, just let me read quickly, because I have not looked to see if it does. I'll provide you with this, and we can update that, and I'll check it up before the end of the meeting and update it. But I believe it's just the in-town school bus. I don't believe it is the T as well.
Because I think it's more than that, the cost anyways, so.
Yeah, I didn't know if the, because of MBTA, they would be extending the discount.
Right, I don't believe so, but I'll double-check it before the end of our meeting. Just a quick playground update. I had a meeting with town manager today regarding the coming school playground. We had put together a capital request. The school committee subcommittee met last year several times, and most specifically in May, we met to look at quotes from two different playground equipment companies that came out and looked at our space, looked at what we had, met with us to see what we were seeking in terms of a full redo of the playground, as well as a potential fixing and rehab. The subcommittee decided at that point that we wanted to go with Ulti Play. Their quote was the better quote, and that we were going to move that thought process along to the town council for a capital improvement request. We did write the capital improvement request as directed by the school committee, and it was right at budget season. I did meet with the town manager, and we discussed the potential funding of such a large project. The number is upwards of $140,000 or in change to do a full playground revision, to bring everything up to 2020 standards. And in discussion, we looked at all the different funding sources, whether it be capital improvement funding source, the new Winthrop foundation was being put in place at that time, and the parameters around that foundation would allow that to be a potential funding source. What we did know was that the school's budget was not a potential funding source based on what we were predicting for a budget, which was under our current, at the time, 2019 budget. And coming in below level service in that budget did not allow us to include that in our budget for 2020. So, the foundation itself took a little bit of time to be put together. There was some red tape involved in that. The committee has been formed. They have had their first meeting, and I believe a second meeting. And the process to access any monies that are available in the foundation are coming through sort of a, almost like a grant proposal. So, you put together something and you ask the foundation. They are well aware of our need at the coming school, and it has been discussed. I'm going to use the capital improvement request, along with the quote received and the notes from our subcommittee meeting stating that the school committee has fully vetted out the need and proposed that the day those grant proposal paperwork, papers come out. I met with the town manager today, and he's hopeful that that will be within the next few weeks. Once that's done, and we receive approval, which is my hope, that there'll be a funding source for that, I'll bring the subcommittee back together. We'll contact the playground company again, just to sort of go through what we had asked for, see if the prices are the same, get an official RFP from them for the cost of the, of the project, and then get a timeline going. Certainly, we'll be during the school year, we hope. There's all kinds of, I've learned a lot about playgrounds and temperatures, and there's certain temperatures that have to be available for them to do the install, and taking down the equipment is not so bad, but doing the install. I also think, you know, it's important for people to understand that the playground itself is inspected by the custodians on a weekly basis, which is something we put in place after the 2016 report was reviewed by me and by the team of people that we had put together. That process continues. Many of the items that were on the initial inspection has, have been resolved. We still want a nice, new, updated playground for our children. The other real important piece, and the reason that we think going to the foundation is appropriate, is this particular playground is used seven days a week, all year long. In the summers, in the evenings, the amount of activity that gets is not specific just to Winthrop Public Schools. It is utilized by the full community throughout the school year, and that was another reason we felt the foundation would be a more viable opportunity for us to receive that larger amount of money. So, that's the update on the playground. We also had some conversation about the Chapter 70 monies. So, the Chapter 70 money coming to the town is approximately in the field of $200,000, more than it was the year before. Sounds like a lot of money, but the cost of goods and services and education go up with the times. So, the, the funding and the monies that have come in, I'll be meeting with the town manager and CFO to determine what their thoughts are, and along with the town council approval, I'm sure, as to how much of that money will be going directly to the schools, and then meeting with the school committee to determine how those additional funds will be used and advising you, reminding you of what we cut to get to of beneath level service budget, and then what are our priorities now that we're approaching the beginning of the school year, and how does that look, whether it be capital improvement items, or whether it be standard items, restoring any of the cuts that we have made. So, more to come on that. I'm waiting for a date that's agreeable between the town manager, CFO, and myself. We've put together a new field rental process with Miller Field. Another part of my conversation with town manager today was around community access. It went very well. We got great reception from people who have used the field, the primary hours that it was being used. It was open from 5 to 8. It looked like 6 to 7:30 was where the bulk of people were utilizing the field. School is opening, so we have to make some adjustments. The folks that were working for POCs and REC through, I believe through Masport, that program has ended, so those folks are no longer available. We did use our seniors, and they were great, that were working through the tax program. Their hours are over now that the school year is opening. So, I'll be meeting again with Larissa from the town manager's office, as well as Matt Serino, our athletic director, to see how we can continue to provide that service and how the town can continue to provide staff to do the oversight. So, very successful, no issues at all. Some tweaks about how we were monitoring people coming and going, needed to give some folks reminders about what they could wear for shoes on the track, and not having bikes or baby carriages, but overall, it went very well. So, we'd like to be able to continue to do that.
So, Lisa, just quickly, so it's not in place right now?
The last week, I believe, was this week that it was open in the morning. So, they'll be, they're working on getting people to do some more oversight and giving us those people, so that we can open it up. So, they're hoping to open more dates for the fall. And then they have to look at the schedule for football and for the fall season and the other athletic activities that we have.
Just if it's not open, like it has been the prior weeks, we probably should send out some type of message, just so people aren't showing up down there and getting frustrated?
Right, correct. I believe the town, on the town manager's side on the town's website, they've been posting it each week in terms of when it's open, when it's not, or if it needs to be closed. So, I'll speak to Larissa about that, but I'm pretty sure she'll continue.
On a different subject, Pat McGee, having the track named after her. I was wondering if we could do that sooner rather than later. I don't know what the timeline would be with the season coming up.
Right, so, I believe that is gone through the town, so the acceptance of, of the track being named after Pat went back to the town council for approval, because the town still is maintaining and ownership of, of the land in terms of the dedication. So, I believe the naming has been accepted, so they've decided it could be named that. Now, the details about what to do with that naming, I don't believe those have yet to be worked out, but I certainly will speak to.
I was just thinking, you were coming into the track season.
Right, I thought they were talking about spring track being done then, but that may not be the case. Let me get an update from the athletic director.
It'd be nice to be able to do that sooner.
Yeah, so, in terms of the ownership of the field, I have to combine with the town council just to make sure that they're approving of actually doing it, and then if there's signage to be put up, you know, the responsibility of that signage, what's that going to look like if there is an opening or an event that's going to take place? What might that event look like? And certainly, that would be at the discretion of the family, you know, if they want to do something big or something small, how that might look. And that would have to be a discussion with the town council and myself, or the town manager, through the town council and myself. Just a few other little updates. Fire inspections and police inspections are being done in each building. We have about a 13-page punch list that we go through with the fire department and the police department around facilities and things that are working. Everything from PA systems to locks to door enclosures to carbon dioxide and carbon monoxide detectors. So, those are all scheduled for beginning this week and running into next week. Those have been scheduled by the chief, both chiefs and the principals, so we hope to have those finished. We did a lot of updating from last year with signage, improper signage indicating classrooms on the outside, so we've revised a lot of that. So, I'm hoping this year, those inspections go pretty quickly with minimal work to be done, you know, between now and the opening of school. Public access. School improvement plans and handbooks, school handbooks will be at the next school committee meeting. We'll have those in your packet ahead of time, so that you can see those. Lots of updates on school handbooks were done to bring us into compliance around the coordinated program review and having certain things in those handbooks that hadn't been in there before. We did a lot of those updates last year. So, this year, there'll be, should be minimal updates, you know, just making sure that we have our harassment policy in there clearly, and if people have moved, the changing of names, certainly the changing of dates. So, those will be available for the next school committee meeting. Just some important dates that I think you should know about. August 26th and 27th, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Accountability, Ms. Laurie Galavan, has worked very closely with the mentor program, which is a program that by state law and Department of Education regulations, we have to have in place for our new teachers coming in. It's always been a one-day mentor induction, where they come in and they meet their mentor, and they go through some, some opening day information, and we try to orient our new staff to the school buildings. We interviewed people from last year and did a survey, and also asked the two people who are overseeing the mentor program, their thoughts, and have completely revised the mentor handbook, the process, the accountability of mentorship, and we've turned it into a two-day program, which includes introductions to technology, to safety, to Alice training, so they can take their Alice course online before they start, orientation of the building, looking at their classroom, just the what to do, what not to do, the who to talk to, where to go when you need something. And then a bigger piece of it is introduction to a lot of the new assessments that we're putting in place, curriculum assessments that we're putting in place, and giving them the opportunity to log into their new accounts and make sure all their technology needs are up and running before the first day of school. The mentors themselves, which are current teachers who are assigned to new teachers, will be in on the 27th. So, the 26th is more of a nuts and bolts day, and the 27th is meeting their mentors and taking a look at the yearly calendar and the expectations. Mentors receive stipends, so in revising the mentor program, it's very clearly outlined what the responsibility is in order to receive your stipend. So, I think it takes away a lot of the guessing and the questioning, and it really increases the accountability and support for our staff here in Winthrop Public Schools. On the 28th, our new teachers arrive for professional development. The focus this year is, on the 28th, is all of the new curriculum assessments that we have put in place, that I brought to your attention at our last school committee meeting. There are several. It took a full school year to identify what we were looking for, and for the subcommittees within the teaching unit to pick the curriculum assessments that they feel will give us the most information and align our schools completely, and are also tied to the five district partnership, which helps us when students are transitioning from one of those other four districts, Everett, Revere, Chelsea. So, when students come into our school district, they're coming in at similar entry points in the curriculum. So, that has been a really neat way to make sure we're not missing time when kids are transitioning from school to school. On the 29th, that will be the all-staff meeting, where everybody will come to the high school. I will stand up and have a few words to say, knowing that everybody in the audience is definitely more concerned with getting in to their classrooms and getting setting up, getting set up than listening to me. But we'll do some overview of our strategic plan a little bit, and also recognize our teachers' years of service, so our 25-year teachers will get their pins, and we'll recognize teachers who have been here. All are welcome from the school committee to attend that. We'll send you an email to make sure that you know the start and end time of that. So, I believe that will run from 8 to about 10:30 maximum, so all are invited to that. And then September 3rd, we hit the gas pedal, and all of our students arrived here. We feel, I feel, after spending a tremendous amount of time with the principals this summer, that we're ready to go. We've made quite a few changes in terms of collecting information from our parents, and there's been some changes at the high school in terms of scheduling, which was a big ticket item. Students, as of yesterday, every single student enrolled has a schedule without a hole in it, without a missing course. So, they are all getting letters, I believe they went out today, to every parent of a student entering the high school regarding their guidance counselor, the appointment process, and we feel as though that the classrooms at the high school now, in terms of an equity standpoint, are balanced very well. So, we had a struggle in the past with one teacher maybe having seven students in a classroom and someone else having 28. So, we've rectified that, and we believe we have equalized class size across the board at the high school, which will be very helpful in terms of evaluation and certainly student engagement. And the last one, November 5th is election day, and students are not in school on November 5th. We are kicking off something new in the Winthrop Public Schools, and it's through the work that we've been doing with the five district partnership that we have really taken a deep dive into the professional development needs of the five communities, and we've partnered all five of us together to put together a showcase of professional development activities for all five districts, where teachers will sign up to be in either Winthrop, Everett, Chelsea, Revere, I'm missing one, to attend a full day of professional development in that district. So, Winthrop Public Schools teachers, if they are looking to do work around equity and inclusion, that program may be held at Everett High School, and our teachers will, whichever teacher wants to, might be five, might be 50 for Winthrop, will go to Everett High School for that. And they'll spend the full day there getting, to know other colleagues, meeting other colleagues, and it's high-level professional development. So, when you pool your resources, you're able to then bring in folks who can give you real quality professional development. We also have staff members who are going to be running some of the subgroups in these professional development pods that we'll be having, and I think that teachers will find that it'll be extremely valuable. They'll start and end their day there. So, if you live in Danvers and you work in Winthrop, yet you signed up for the Everett Professional Development Day, you'll go to Everett High, you'll do your thing all day, and then you'll go home from Everett High, and you'll come back to Winthrop the next day. We vetted it out with the union, because we wanted to make sure that there were going to be no issues with the union, and the union was excellent in terms of, you know, valuing the opportunity that they've been given and getting the information out to the staff.
Choices, too, some great choices.
Yeah, and so, you know, cultural competency and equity are two of the really big topics, and cultural proficiency, and people are asking for that. So, we wanted to bring in quality speakers to be able to provide our staff, and there will be follow-up after, we'll have surveys done after in terms of how well it worked. And it's just a great combination of five districts working together to provide what teachers really need. So, I'm excited about that. And that is the end of my superintendent report.
Okay, moving on to personnel.
Yes, so, personnel is a moving target in the summer, as many of you know. You think you have it all settled, and then you receive a call that somebody is moving on to a different community. So, we have eight teachers who have resigned from the Winthrop Public Schools this year. I believe I informed you last year that I do exit surveys with each teacher to find out sort of what's the theme, why a teacher's leaving. And I can tell you that six of the eight are not leaving for anything related to money. It is life-changing stuff, moving, receiving a job in a community that's closer to their home. They may have little children, they are not digging the commute to Winthrop. And we also have somebody returning who did take a job in another community last year and has, I think, figured out that the grass is not always greener, and is coming back here in an opening that we have in grade eight math. And that was a really neat conversation to have. Tell me what you learned, you know, why do you think you want to come back? Let's talk about how you left us, which was done very well, and appreciative of everything that Winthrop had provided this particular teacher, and she's choosing to come back to a district that, in her opinion and in her words, supports teachers and values quality education. So, I was super excited about that. We have hired everybody we need to hire as of today. We are fully staffed, got some really neat folks, younger population of students, of staff members, who've had to endure 45-minute one-on-one sessions with me about our strategic plan and our core values, and they're not provided with a contract until we have our conversation, and they ask me questions, and I ask them questions. Patty is certainly the person that gets to see me spend that quality time, and so I can honestly say, as the superintendent, that we are bringing on quality staff with good backgrounds and people who have really nice vision about supporting students across the district, but also preparing them for their next step in life, whether that's middle school, or high school, or going on into the world of college or work. So, an exciting array of people that are coming with some really good educational backgrounds. In terms of resignations, we have a few resignations. Spanish teacher at the high school, and these are, some of these are rather old and have since our last meeting. A school adjustment counselor at the Gorman Fort Banks, and a secretary at the high school. All of those positions have been posted and filled. of those positions have been posted and filled. The postings, special education teacher at the Alphatee Cummings, Spanish teacher at the middle school, bus driver for our special education students, ESP at the Cummings, ESP at the Fort, Gorman Fort Banks, and a special education teacher for our therapeutic classroom at the middle school, and a couple of coaching positions, boys head varsity coach for soccer, and the mentoring positions were also posted for teachers who have already expressed interest in wanting to be mentors. We have no leave of absences. And that's the end of my staffing report.
Okay, new business, we have the Winthrop Middle School Athletic Handbook. Looking for a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I just have one quick question, this has been reviewed for compliance, state and federal, already?
It has, and it was reviewed at length last year, and some of the very minimal changes, some are in terms of dates. Mr. Serino and Mr. Crombie are always working to figure out how to better inform our parents of any changes and things that are expected of student athletes. Mr. Serino has looked at several other athletic handbooks from different communities, and has, over the years, taken bits and pieces of that to strengthen our, our handbook. I don't know that every community has an athletic handbook, but I can tell you, in the two years that I've been here, and the conversations I've had with some parents who wanted to further discuss topics related to athletics, I pull this book out and say, have you read this, have you read page five, because you're coming to me with this concern, however, you signed this handbook and on page five. So we're encouraging our parents at all of our parent and student athletic sessions that we have, where parents come out to hear about athletics, to please read the handbook. Please read what it has to say in it, we enforce it thoroughly, of course, there's always wiggle room, depending upon an individual situation, however, this is what we go by with all of our athletes, and I would approve of that handbook, based on the dates.
And the parents sign off that they receive it as well?
Parents sign off, students over eighteen sign their own.
Okay, can I have a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Unfinished business, the superintendent evaluation, but I believe we covered that in our committee reports. So want to move on to public comment? Hearing none. Public relations?
Plans?
I just want to say that I attended the middle school orientation with Mr. Fabiano and the superintendent, and it was very informative to the students and their families, it was a nice opportunity to get everyone into the building.
There were a lot of parents there.
There were a lot of parents.
There were a lot of parents, so that was impressive, and that's one of our goals, is to keep pushing to get as many parents. Certainly after sixth grade, it starts to dwindle a little bit, but it was nice to see that many parents and that many students, and the students were very well behaved, with the exception of, maybe one sitting behind me, which happened to be my own, however, they were, they were, I'm just kidding about that, but they were very well behaved, and Mr. Curly was not able to be there that evening for a personal reason, however, Justine Franzese, I thought, did a great job.
Great job, keeping it moving.
Keeping it moving, but also engaging the parents, and inflecting some humor, it's middle school, we have to be, there has to be some humor, we're dealing with middle school age kids, who need to understand that although we're an assistant principal, we also have a personality, and that we are approachable, and, and she did crack a few jokes, which the majority of the kids got, and the parents didn't, which was fabulous. It was fabulous to watch them, so she did a great job.
That was a great, great, great opportunity.
Well, good job.
Yes, second?
Second.
All those in favor?